Okay, so I am calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Can we please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one. And... So just change the agenda.
Okay.
Right? We have not figured?
Yeah.
The motion to approve the agenda with a minor change, that number seven is scratched out, they will not be here for their update.
Some illness got in the way and pre-K will reschedule. We can talk about that during agenda building.
So with that being said, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the edited.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Thank you. Public input and announcements. I don't have any.
Public input?
Okay.
Can I make one announcement?
Go right ahead.
You may have heard over the years that Tim Parent, who works here at the middle high school, and he works with a lot of our students on really important life skills, so he'll do some woodworking activities with them, and they had been building a sugar house.
A sugar house.
Which is out back here if you ever get a chance to visit. Done some incredible work over the years. Want to recognize FW Webb for making some pretty substantial donations this year to Tim's program and the sugar house, so that those students can continue to be engaged in learning about the maple syrup industry. So a huge thank you to FW Webb.
I'd also have two announcements. One is congratulations to the Rutland area robotics, Lego Robotics League, that is practiced out of our school, because our Teacher of the Year last year actually coordinates and instructs it, and they placed first on Saturday up in Norwich at states.
Awesome.
So that is my first announcement. So Karen and her husband Scott and everybody else, thank you.
Karen McCullough.
My second one is about the last board meeting in regards to the, not the B3 complaint, but the residency complaint. I received some emails after the board meeting as I did not address it, and I need to make it very clear that the board does not have input or power, I guess, to determine if a board member does not reside in their town. It is the town officials and board that will inform the school board if that so does happen. So in the respect to Bruce Morton, there has been nothing from Wallingford Town stating that he does not reside in his town of an official. So I needed to just clarify that and state that. Bruce is very generous to semi-explain what's going on, but that being said, that's kind of where we are just going to leave it. It is not up to the school board to do that. So those were the rest of my announcements.
Can I throw one more thing in?
Yep.
Versity cheer team, they got first place at their competition, I think, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Remember?
On Saturday.
Huge congratulations to our Versity cheer team as well.
And their state's competition is, let me think about, February 18th, and that is in Virgens. So they had a competition at Rutland that they always go to, because I will be present on the 18th.
Awesome.
Okay, so on to the next. Any approval of the minutes for one from 118?
I made that one.
Thank you. Do I have a second? And any discussion on the minutes? What?
Nothing, nevermind.
Okay. All in favor of them then? Pam does such a good job with our minutes. All right, do you need a, when we do a vote, let me know if you need roll call or if you can see.
You got it.
Okay. Student board member update, so it is...
And I believe we do have Sidney and Dane on.
And Dane, yep.
I don't know if Dane has any updates, but I have two. One is, I have been working with Ms. Thompson since Dane's school year to put together a slideshow for the main lobby meeting. There's those pictures of sporting events, pep rallies, basically anything around that we do in school to, so then people from the community go to Mo River, they can just see what's been happening in our school. So I've been working on that and been, it's been up almost every day. And then my slogan announcement is, Ms. Thompson and I also have been wanting to have, get picnic tables or actually wood for picnic tables. So our wood shop can make picnic tables for outside, so for seniors or 11th through 10th grade can eat outside when it gets warm out, if they're in academic standing, like if they have good grades. So I've been working on that, so hopefully maybe next week or two weeks, we'll have wood shop start making picnic tables for our outside area, for the lunchroom, so, yeah.
Good job, Sidney.
That's awesome, yeah.
That is amazing. And wood shop build us some new bleachers too? Dane, do you have anything? I'm putting you on the spot. You're muted, and I think you want to stay that way, but I'm not sure. All right, well, with that said, thank you very much, Sidney. Okay, so no pre-K intervention update.
And I have a presentation I'm going to start putting up so that Deborah can...
All right, I am giving that. My name is Deborah Gardner Bosch, and I am the MTSS coordinator. Here are probably not many people, and someone who's not affiliated with education asks me what I do, I always sort of take a breath and I go, "Well, I'm an MTSS coordinator," and you know, that doesn't tell a lot of people a lot of things, "but the Vermont MTSS, the important thing to remember out of MTSS," which is the next slide, Brian, "is that it's all about improving learning for all students, and whether that's through differentiated and intensified assessments, instruction, intervention, it covers everything that's in tier one, which is what happens in all classrooms for all students, and tier two and tier three, which are students who need a little extra something, whether it's in the classroom or as a pull-out." Anyway, the goal of MTSS is just helping and supporting for all students to be successful. And because that means that like there's about nothing in the school system that wouldn't fall under that category, I just going to tell you a little bit about my areas of focus, which is the next slide. So I do, I am the facilitator for the intervention team and for literacy data. I'm also the facilitator for the Elnic, the Early Learning Networked Improvement Community. I know you've been hearing quite a bit about, and I have watched the last several sessions to see things that teachers have presented there. Facilitate the literacy and curriculum workshops, worked with Jody in all of the planning for pre-K six PLCs, and coordinate the mentoring and new teacher program. But I'm going, I'm going to talk just a few minutes about the ELA intervention team. We no longer have any math interventionists, but we have five ELA interventionists. Mary Ellen Kuparsky works both at Clarendon and at Shrewsbury, and has been a classroom teacher, long time educator here in the district. Mary Beth Monahan is in her second year and is at Clarendon full-time this year. Kathleen Harrington is at both Tinmouth and Wallingford. Mary Beth and Kathleen came to us with lots of experience at the Vermont Reeds Institute, where they had worked as specialists in literacy and coaches for many years. Joan Latuca is a longtime special educator from the district, who now works as an interventionist full-time in Wallingford, and Becky Stockton supposedly retired last year, but works three days a week for us, both mostly in Wallingford and a bit in El Clarendon. She also has a special ed background. Anyway, as a slight point of interest, if you ever get asked if there's anyone in the district who's taught pre-K 12 and in all five schools in the district, there is, me. Next, the next slide. So the early literacy NIC, and it's going to tell you sort of how we got involved with it. It really came out of the PLC group that the intervention team runs. We had, we read articles, books, whatever, as part of our professional development, and we had read quite a bit of materials and watched a webinar that was by Dr. Nell Duke. And the interventionists had gotten pretty excited about some of the things in some of the articles. Then the AOE put out this little blurb in like September of 2021, saying that they were looking for schools who were willing to work with Dr. Nell Duke. So we were like, "Well, this sounds really interesting," and so we contacted the AOE about it and found out a little more about what was involved, and it was really a pre-K K to maybe one focus. And that was exciting too, because we've been looking for ways to build more bridges to our pre-K program, because often, you know, we've been sort of siloed, you know, K6 is running under one way, and pre-K had sometimes run a little more separately than we would like. Anyway, we got involved with it. It's really about improvement science, so if you're hearing that term, or the PD, SA cycles, inquiry cycles, action research, all of these things are all very similar and using some of the same things. Basically, you plan something, you, you know, have objectives and goals that you set out, you do, you know, try a new instructional practice, you collect your data, see how it went, and then you're going to adjust what you're doing, adapt it, adopt it, whatever you would need to do, and sort of start again. So this is the idea of the cycle, and this is what teachers are presenting back about. They're presenting what they had planned, what they did, what happened in the classroom, how they adjusted it, it's all part of this cycle. The really amazing thing about this, and can't emphasize it enough, is that, you know, the last two years, which have obviously been hard years for teachers in education, we had teachers who committed to do this. This required them meeting from four to 5:30 every month with Dr. Duke, with all the states that were involved, so these were very large meetings. We had teacher teams from Nebraska, New Jersey, Maryland, and Vermont there. Then another meeting of four to five in the evening, of course, again, with just Dr. Duke and the Vermont team. And then one or two meetings a month that were with the AOE or the, now the chief, let's see, CCSSO, Chief Curriculum...
Council Chiefs.
Council, thank you. Anyway, yeah. So it was a lot of time and meetings, and we had people who really committed to do that. We had two pre-K teachers, both at Wallingford, Tiffany Martin and Stacy Fula, kindergarten teachers, Julia Wyman, who was full-time at Clarendon, and Tabitha Davis, who does K1 at Tinmouth. We had Kathleen Harrington and Mary Beth Monahan, two of our interventionists, myself and Coral, who were involved in that, in that first year. The teachers, as you heard already, I know, felt that the goals that they were setting and what people in other states were saying they already did sounded, you know, as Julia Bonifine said, too lofty. It was sort of untenable, idealistic, that'd be great, but we don't think that's going to happen. So you've seen those, you know, those were the pre-K ones first sounded in most words by the end of pre-K, and that kids could read and write all regular CDC consonant-vowel consonant words by the end of first grade. So what we had for our baseline data that first year in November there, it's telling you that 7% or one child could meet this goal who is in kindergarten, and at the end of that year, 92% of the students in that class could meet that goal. So it was pretty remarkable, and I looked at, we gave that same test to students who hadn't been in, in the NIC. So in the fall, we wanted to see if it had stuck. So we tested the students who were in the NIC schools, 83% of the kids who are now in first grade still had met that. Only 14% of those who hadn't been in the NIC schools could do this. It was such a remarkable difference that I went back to look and see whether the cohorts of kids had been really different, and so I looked at what their alphabet knowledge had been coming into kindergarten. You can see there that the statistics were very similar. They were very similar groups of kids from our schools that were involved in the ones that weren't. So that was so successful, and we, I took it around, shared it with teachers, and so for year two, we had even more, we had seven classroom teachers willing to make this commitment, five, four interventionists and a special educator, and three administrators that were involved with us. And that's just been so exciting to be able to do that. After the end of last year, we were, we got a mini grant from the CCSSO, and teachers that were in the NIC were able to work to put together book sets for pre-K. We put together book sets of 66 books for the larger schools, they were like two sets, A, B, and then split a set with the small school. We also had teachers work putting together decodable book sets for teachers to use, because what Dr. Duke was telling us is that some of the very best decodable books were available online, but it took, you know, it takes time to run them off, have multiple copies, label what, you know, what skill they're for, and get those all organized into file folders and boxes and whatever. And we did that work and gave those boxes to all K, K1 teachers, and we used some SIR funds to purchase some books for two, three teachers that were decodable. So the system support for this year, we were able to align some of our PLCs and run those pre-K six, that were looking at these same literacy essentials that we had been working with, with Dr. Duke, who's from the University of Michigan. And we had the teachers who were involved in the NIC willing to facilitate, so they're facilitating at each of the schools, because as I said now, we have teachers at each of the schools that are involved in more than one in several of the schools. I put together a, the Google slides and notes for them, so that it's sort of ready to go, and they facilitate it at their own schools. We also were, for the first time in a lot of years, I think, able to have principals really work, you know, our subs situation is hard, so releasing teachers during a school day has been really difficult, but teachers really need that time to work together. We were able to get all of our K2 teachers together and go over what had, you know, what had made the difference, what were the change ideas, what were the new practices we were doing, and really share a bit more with that. Out of that day, which happened in January, we also did a draft schedule that we're going to meet with Dr. Walpole about, who's our new research person now in February, and that schedule is an ELA schedule for K2 across the district. For us, you know, we've been asked, because we have been one of the most successful districts, definitely in Vermont, but even in multiple states, of getting teachers involved, what really made a difference. We think the crucial points have been the district admin support and really a dedicated team facilitator that can help keep the work moving forward. Our teacher ambassadors, you know, just the fact that our teachers have been willing to do this and then found that it was successful and been so excited about it. The fact that we have real content expertise in Kathleen Harrington and Mary Beth Monahan, and their ability to help with some of the support documents and to support teachers has been invaluable. And then, you know, just having the targeted professional development stipends, materials that sort of lined up made a difference. I know you've seen some of this, I'm just real quickly going to show you, I don't, this is what, these are slides that were shared with, in the PLC groups, they're very similar to the slides that are being shared in our NIC groups, where teachers are writing what they plan and do and what they were studying. There's one more, I think. Yeah, and even include videos of themselves. And implementing, this is implementing one of the small groups from Dr. Sharon Walpole's decoding, differentiated reading book. So, last slide. Think I'm there. Oh, it's going to play.
I'm trying to play that.
It's, it's a very nice video, it's top of them. So the takeaways that I would have here, is that really the heart of, of the MTSS program is quality tier one, what happens in the classroom every day for all students to be successful. That interventionists are specialists that work to both strengthen and support that tier one and provide some tier two, which is like that extra dose, or tier three, which is more intense. Data that demonstrates student success is a powerful motivator, and teachers are very motivated by that. And, you know, teacher learning and leadership is alive and well, definitely here in this school district. For that spread and scale, new learning takes time, resources, team planning, for the structures, you know, the coordinated curriculum that you hear, and Jody often mention, assessment schedules, materials, PD, all of those are just really crucial for us to spread and scale. I don't know how I did on my 10 minutes, but I feel like I'm amazing.
Pretty good, yeah.
You did good.
Questions?
I just want to say, I really appreciate the, kind of the holistic thing that you were discussing, because one of the things that we talked about in one of our community budget meetings is we had a few parents who were like, "Why are we spending money on interventionists? We need, they're just helping the lowest students, we need to be making sure we're spending money on all the students." And I think this is a good point of showing, we're helping everybody and we're trying. And if, if you're even close to doing those numbers on a consistent basis, that's going to help everybody in this school.
Absolutely.
So I really, really appreciate that.
Anybody else? All right.
I like that Deborah was able to give you a big picture view of what you heard all of our elementary folks share.
Yeah.
That they're doing the work and how it's going with students, but to get a little bit of the background of, how did we even get there to have so many teachers invested in doing that work?
It's nice to hear after...
Yeah.
That we've been to some schools and heard the teachers talk about it, and now we're hearing you. So it's nice to piece it all back together.
Good, well, that's what I looked at, what the teachers had said and thought, "I want to try to see if I could frame the larger picture of how we got here."
It's great, it's also great to hear that our, our district is doing very well in the program, and that we have a lot of onboarding for teachers, and that's great.
Well, well enough that the Agency of Education said, "We're trying to do the same work with math. Can you help us get teams together and do that work?" And we said, "Our people are doing really hard work, we don't have time to do that too," which is tricky, you know?
San Will enough.
It'd be the same teachers.
They brought a group of us to DC, you know, I missed a meeting for that, they are bringing a larger group of us to Oregon in March. Yeah.
Asking us to present about our...
Not at our expense.
Not at our, so no, we're just spending zero dollars. But really, you know, I think...
It's good, no.
Zero dollars!
I haven't gotten that bill yet.
I almost had a heart attack for a minute.
No, the state's paying for it because of, because of the work, but most importantly, because of the work the teachers are doing. Like, they're the key to this.
Awesome.
Special ed is next. I knew Brian was going to say that.
In, in our policy, because part of how we set our schedule this year was looking at policy and looking at all the pieces that are required for annual reports, there's actually a really specific piece, F26, Use of Restraint and Seclusion, that is an annual report. And the bulk of what Coral's going to share today is actually around restraint and seclusion and that piece of policy. Sorry, my words are not coming out well right now, so I'll let Coral talk.
I'm glad the English teacher's having that problem. Makes me feel a lot better. I feel really good.
Okay, so, policy F26 is, is the one that addresses the use of restraint and seclusion in schools. And again, as, as Brian has just said, part of that policy does require that you receive an annual report about the status of our implementation of that policy, as well as any recommendations for change, so that's kind of how I'm going to approach this. So in terms of status of implementation of the policy, I'm very pleased to report that policy F26 is without a doubt at full implementation in the schools. Some of you who were on this board a couple of years ago, we sat in this very room to craft policy F26, and, and when we did that work together, I actually brought you the language from the AOE, and we more or less took the statute and turned it into policy, and there's a lot of really good reason why we did that. When you hear the words restraint and seclusion of students, that's a pretty serious topic that we're, that we're talking about. So you can imagine the statutory requirements around how that stuff is implemented in schools. This year, at the AOE level, there were some slight changes in the reporting, and because of those changes, we sort of needed to shift gears a tad in terms of our administrative procedures. So I'm just going to tell you about that a little bit and tell you how that's going so you, so you know. Whenever a student requires the use of a physical restraint, when I say that, you should know that means that a staff person or people are physically managing students. They are, they're intervening in a way that requires hands-on control of that child. That's what a restraint is. Seclusion, on the other hand, is, is very different. I will tell you, we don't use seclusion here. We do not, under any circumstances, use that part of Rule 4500 here. Seclusion is actually pretty synonymous with solitary confinement, if you're, if you're familiar with that, and there's a lot of reasons why we don't use it. So I won't be talking with you about seclusion at all, because that does not happen in our UUSD. But in terms of restraint, whenever a restraint is applied to a child, there is a series of reporting requirements that are then triggered. So the person or persons who were involved in the use of that restraint are required to submit a written report to their billing administrator by the end of the day on which that restraint was applied. From there, that written report goes to the parent or guardian of that child, and then it... and then it also comes to me and Brian. And we will be reviewing that report to determine if it meets the criteria for needing to be reported to the AOE. And there are, there are very specific guidelines and parameters that Brian and I have to review those reports for, and that's what we do. Restraints in general, in this district, are very infrequent. When we do have them, they tend to affect the same or similar populations of students. So, it's not uncommon when you have students in a particular program, for that program to see a higher level or higher incidence of restraints. That's pretty common, pretty typical. But in general, in our general, you know, total census, we have very, very, very small numbers of, of physical restraints happening. And that's, that's the way we want it, trust me. That's the way we want it. In terms of how well our reporting procedures are working, between the changes that have, that were made this year to how we report, overall, I'm, I am pretty pleased with how it's going. I feel like we have good control over situations where, you know, it's easy to say, oh, you know, we restrained a student, but we like forgot to report it, or we didn't think we had to. I feel like administratively, we have really, really good control over not letting that stuff happen. Because stuff that flies under the radar like that, you don't want that. That's the stuff that gets you in an awful lot of trouble quickly. So, I feel like with the checks and balances in our system between the building administrator requiring a notification, the parent or guardian receiving the notification, and then both Brian and I receiving it, and then if we need to, we'll report upwards to the AOE. That's a lot of checks and balances, and those things are in place for child protection. So, I do feel strongly about that, that that is a positive that's in place. So, again, in, in terms of this, the implementation of this policy, there is no part of it that is, you know, kind of untended to. Related to restraint and seclusion, just so you know, that's not, you know, restraint is not something that anybody can just do. It isn't like, oh, you know, Matt's in the school and someone's acting out, so he just decided to, you know, manhandle that child. That isn't how this goes. If, if restraint is going to be applied to a student, there is a specific set of training techniques that, that the person carrying it out has to have had. And if they don't have that and then restrain that child, Brian and I are making a report to the AOE. So, just know that restraint is not something that your general population of faculty or staff are just applying willy-nilly. That's a pretty big deal. So, one of the things that I feel positively about this year is that we have increased the number of crisis prevention and intervention trainers that we have. We were struggling for a while. We had, we were down to one trainer for the whole district. So, that meant we had one person training however many people in the use of crisis prevention and intervention. And one trainer is not enough for a district this size. Ideally, three trainers is a really good number. We have four now. So, pretty darn happy about that, because that allows us to train more people more often. So, in the past, we had situations where we were like, oh, gosh, we've got a backlog of people. We know we need to get trained, but with only one person to do it, when are we gonna do it? Now, we have four, so we're getting to people more frequently. And CPI does require a two-year recertification cycle. So, just because I was trained once in restraint, you know, five years ago, I have to get retrained every two years to make sure that I'm still implementing those techniques with fidelity. So, I feel pretty strongly about the quality of the, the restraint training that's happening. And again, it, it all goes back to child protection for me. So, I think that's, that's excellent.
Can I throw something?
Yeah, sure.
So, Coral mentioned that every restraint is reported to parents, guardians, caregivers, to the principal, to her, and to me.
Yep.
And that's something that we talked about, because Rule 4500 doesn't require that every report go to me. But you read the news, there were several articles last year.
Multiple headlines.
Around schools and the use of restraint. So, we talked and figured, why not just have all the information? So that if I'm ever asked, well, how many restraints do we do? Do we do that many? Do we do fewer than that? Or should we be concerned about that? I know. So, I think that's an important piece that we, we can never miss something, because it's not getting stuck on somebody's desk. They're always coming to me. So, just so that you're aware, we go above and beyond Rule 4500.
Yeah, our procedures are actually more restrictive than, than what we're, you know.
Ensures that.
Yep.
When we do have to do this, that there are multiple people looking at it, so that we're sure that we're doing it the right way. I think that's important.
And one of the new things that we have happening this year, actually, that I've implemented with my teams, when a restraint or seclusion happens within our special education program, that situation is then debriefed by a team of seven people on a weekly basis. So, even though, even though the report has gone through those people, there then, on Friday mornings, is gonna be a team of seven people looking at what the situation was for that child, how we reacted, and what we might need to be thinking about for that child or that team moving forward, so that it doesn't happen again. That doesn't mean we can prevent all of the situations where restraint is necessary, but there's an awful lot of proactive approach happening to make sure that we're not getting to the level where we need to, to be implementing that stuff on the regular. So, so I'm happy to answer questions if you want or provide information, but I, I am pleased to report that this policy is fully implemented and feeling very confident about the administrative procedures that we have in place.
No, no recommendation for changes?
No, I don't have anything at this time. Nope.
Questions? Paul?
So, would I, would I understand that every classroom teacher gets this training?
Not necessarily. It's made available to really anyone that might like it. A lot of classroom teachers have had it. It is very unusual, however, that a classroom teacher would be restraining a student. Very unusual. So, that typically is not part of the training we would give them. The staff who you might expect to be involved in restraints are more like your support staff, special education staff, school counseling and crisis staff. What happens with classroom teachers is generally, if there is a child having an acting out episode, that classroom teacher's gonna take the rest of their students elsewhere. So, the teachers have generally had the verbal de-escalation part of the training, with a good number of them having had the physical part, but we don't typically have teacher, classroom teachers restraining kids.
Good question.
Yep. Yeah, it's hard to imagine if, if you're not, you know, in it, but, yeah.
We all good?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Coral.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing is the vacant Shrewsbury seat. We have two candidate, I can't say candidates. Two candidates.
Interested individuals.
Two interested. There you go. One is Andy Hills.
Andy Richards Peel.
Which I don't see him. And the.
So, Andy emailed me to say that he forgot he has a commitment for one of our meeting dates, and that would make him only available to serve for one meeting. So, apologies to, I was waiting for the germane moment to bring it up, but.
Oh.
As much as he'd love to go on a reunion tour with us all, he will not be bringing the band back together, as they say.
To where we.
And I'll give the board a reminder of process and statute. I think that's worth, worth sharing.
Anyway, we have Andy and we have Cindy Van Dean.
So.
So, now we will go to the process.
Statute tells us that we are, the district clerk immediately notifies the select board upon the creation of a vacancy. So, the evening that Adrian resigned and the board accepted the resignation, which was the 18th of January, is that right?
Yep, clock started.
Yep. So, we had District Clerk reach out early the next morning to the select board to share with them that we were gonna post it on Front Porch Forum and that we would like to be aware of any interested individuals, and that we would be checking back with the select board the 27th, Friday. And I actually think I had a typo and I, and we said Monday, the 27th.
I think so, we did too, yeah.
We were checking back with the select board on the 27th to get their recommendation, because statute requires that we consult with the select board. The last several times we've done this, BJ for Wallingford, Nick was the recommendation from the Wallingford Board, Maria French was the recommendation to take Maria French's place from the Wallingford Select Board too. We sent, we sent a similar note to the select boards upon vacancy. We advertised in similar ways. We used similar timelines. So, statute gives us 30 days. And I know some folks have said, well, why did you wait 30 days? Because we tend to, that gives us two meetings from the vacancy, and that's what we've done in the past. So, I think giving appropriate notice and time for interested parties to work with the select board is important. So, all of that is to say, we feel pretty confident that we followed statute, and we've done it in a way that's in keeping with how we've consulted with the select board in the last two vacancies that we had, if that makes sense. Select Board's recommendation as of Friday is Andy Richards Peel.
But we will take a vote. All right, how do we want to?
I think you need a motion to appoint.
I do.
I can make a motion.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll second it.
You don't even know who it is yet, Liz.
I mean, I know it's gonna be.
What's your motion?
I would make a motion that Cindy Van Dean be appointed to take over.
Do you still make your second, Liz?
No, I thought you were gonna say something else. Sorry, Liz.
No, that's okay.
I second that motion. So, let's roll call.
Do we discuss?
Oh, we need a discussion. Sorry. We need a discussion.
I was, I, just from my point of view, of going back, and we just listened to that other meeting and from the complaint last week, and I looked out at other things, and I was prepared to vote for whatever the select board said, because I felt like there was a lot of communication in the, the last time, like, we followed it with Nick. But if he's taking himself out, there's, I think we have to.
And Andy, Andy told me the same thing that I think he told Sam.
Yeah.
He said he would not be available for this night's meeting. So, he didn't say that he wasn't interested. He just wanted to clarify, you know, in good faith, hey, I can't be at the meeting on the first, if that made a difference. So.
I, I, sorry, I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
I thought he had sent you the same email, and so it's slightly different. What he sent me, would it be all right with both, if I read what he sent?
Yes, because I don't think anybody else got it.
Yeah, no, I, it's hard to tell sometimes. I realized I would not be in town today. He's gone, which means that I, of course, cannot attend the board meeting. I'm sorry, I did not realize this before. If I were to be elected, I would only be able to attend the annual meeting. Therefore, it really does not make sense for me to be elected to attend one meeting. I will leave it to the board to decide if I would likely to serve as board member for February or elect someone else. If I'm elected, I will attend to the annual meeting and will review the budget so I can support with any questions on the floor, though I strongly doubt Liz will need any support. So, I apologize for my delay.
No, that's, that's fine. Thank you for the clarification.
And to be fully transparent, my one request of Andy was, let the select board know, please. And he did confirm that he shared the same message that he shared with me with the select board, so that they were aware of that, if that makes sense.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion on the motion that's on the table? Okay, so I'm gonna do roll call, because that way Pam can get this. Liz?
I'm a yay.
Okay. Sam?
You wanna clarify what we're voting on?
But for Cindy Van Dean to be appointed. Sam?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
I have nobody else up there, right? Doug?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yep.
Matt?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So, congratulations, Cindy. You get the next month of things. And don't worry, we'll walk you through it.
Depending on how agenda building goes, I still think it might be worth getting sworn in. So, checking with town.
Yes, if you can.
Because we, we may have a meeting before the annual meeting. That's a business meeting.
Just get sworn in anyway. That way we're covered.
Oh, and actually, we were talking about it. Town Meeting Day is so late this year.
It's on the 7th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yes, just email her up there or find out when you can go and just get sworn in.
I live like right next door.
Perfect.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, so next is the annual meeting moderator appointment. And I have, and I didn't let her know, but I have discussed this with Ashley Robinson, who is the Assistant Town Clerk in Clarendon and the Delinquent Tax Collector in Clarendon, and she has agreed. Michelle Kinney is beyond busy and could not do it. I happened to see her in all these one night.
And huge thanks again to Michelle for jumping in last minute, last year to help us.
And I made sure that she, so I would like to make a motion to have Ashley Robinson be the annual meeting moderator at the end of the month.
I'll second this.
Thank you. Any discussion? Not a lot of free people, I'm telling you. All right, all in favor? Do you want to roll again, Pam?
I think that was anonymous, yeah.
Okay.
Or, sorry.
All right.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Anonymous.
Be a little different.
All right, well, congratulations. Ashley and I will let her know tomorrow.
And if she wants to connect with, with, with me or with Pam and try and sort through any details, if she, you know, if she's very comfortable with it.
Pull her in.
But if she wants to talk before, we can definitely.
Terminology, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so we're on to the financial audit, and I'm assuming that's Stan.
Stan. I don't see Stan on.
He's up there.
Oh, there he is.
He's up there.
He's there.
I hear footsteps.
I was gonna say, but I think he's next door.
Good evening, everybody. In your materials, you received two letters from our, from auditors regarding the FY '22 audit. This year, things went a lot more, a lot quicker, a lot more smoother. They seem to be a little more cohesive than in the past years with COVID going on and being understaffed like everybody else. So, this year, the audit started at the, actually, at the end of June. They came back and finished it off at the end of September. And I got a draft report in the, in this, early December, and everything was finalized right after Christmas. So, it went pretty smoothly this year. If you read the letters they sent you, one letter was a management letter, and another one was just a representation letter regarding how the audit went and the interaction between them and the staff and, and administrators. It was a clean audit. There was no material findings in the report. There is a suggestion that was in the management letter that they put in regarding the student activity accounts. A change, you know, the legislature due to, you know, embezzlement issues throughout the state regarding these, these accounts. Switched their designation from a fiduciary account, where, you know, the board just kind of rubber stamped everything in the past, to a special, special revenue account, which is more like a, almost like a grant. We keep, you know, so, which now required us to bring it into our financial accounting software. Uh, we keep, you know, so, which now required us to bring it into our financial accounting software. Uh, last year, we, we worked on it through the year to get these, to get all the accounts into the system. Uh, the e-finance system wasn't working exactly properly too well with the information at the time, but they fixed those issues and we're up and running for this year. And also last year, you might have noticed too, that we were including that in your warrants section for you to approve the, the checks that were written up, written out of the student activity accounts. So we had started the process during the year, we just did not have it up and running in our financial software. Uh, so we've taken care of that issue. As of July 1st of this year, we were up and running in the, in the system with our student activity accounts and writing checks and making deposits and through, through, through our system. Uh, so I, in regards to the numbers and the, that I had given you for last year, nothing changed. There was no, no adjustments. Uh, we ended the year in the general fund with the fund balance being $2,322,448. Our building fund, uh, we ended up with a negative, uh, in our general fund, we ended up with a negative of, uh, deficit, I should say, a deficit for the year of 98, of roughly around $98,000. We, of course, budgeted $700,000 of a deficit that's funded through our surplus. So that's an unanticipated surplus of a little over $600,000. So that means the full $200,000 will go into the building fund this year. And our lunch fund, our lunch program balance, again, we've, you know, we're getting a higher reimbursement rate from the feds than what we would get from paid students. Uh, so that balance is actually the highest it's ever been, which is a little over $176,000. You know, I put out, uh, you know, to all those principals, uh, what their requests are for their programs, what they might be short on for supplies and, and we've, and told them to forward that on to Tim and Tim's, Tim's dealing with those lists. So that we can spend money on the program with these funds. Were there any questions in regards to the audit?
Adjacent, and maybe not relevant to our school, um, I feel like maybe it was a month ago or something, on VPI, they were talking about, like, the state had pushed, that they wanted everybody to use, like, a certain financial software at schools. And do we use that, and are we having the major headaches that they were talking about, like, that it wasn't really?
We do use it.
Can I, can I answer?
Be nice now, mine, mine might be a little more diplomatic than you.
Our, our folks have busted their rear ends to make it work. And where a lot of districts, I feel like, griped a lot, because there are problems. There are problems. Our folks said, well, we'll make it work. So, yeah, the headaches are there, but I think the attitude that our folks had was, impressed me because they made it work, so.
And, and the reason why we don't have the headaches of some other districts in the state is we're a very simple structure, we're one district. And we don't have any other districts or any other, uh, sub-districts, so to speak, underneath us. While other districts are dealing with four or five, maybe as many as six entities within their supervisory union. That has caused, you know, issues with them to actually, uh, keep that, keep that, um, be able to track that in the e-finance software. It's, it's much easier to deal with the issues under, with one, with one district.
You're right, you are being more diplomatic. It, it still was a struggle.
But it is, it does not.
It was a struggle coming on board, but, uh.
It does not do what it should do.
Yeah.
It's kind of shocking that, you know, the state selected this program to begin with, it's not a.
The state never uses programs that work when they're supposed to work.
Right.
Yeah, so. No, if you have experience, it tests them.
We are currently now in a situation where we are discussing with the state as to what to do going forward. Uh, the options are to, A, leave everybody in the dust and figure, let them deal with Power School on our own. We don't think that's a very good option.
When we tried to do the right thing and we got on board on the schedule, we did things that they told us to do. And now that support might disappear, that's frustrating.
Second option is we do stay on, but the state actually still there, you know, being, uh, being our advocate with Power School, and that's really the only way that's gonna survive if the state's involved. And the third was either, A, give these districts money to go out and buy their own software, so. That's currently where we stand with that.
Question?
Are you doing the financial question here, Kim?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, just.
The other thing in your packet was the financial management questionnaire. We're required to list out our, you know, internal control structure, our, you know, separation of duties. We try to do the best we can with the, you know, the small staff that we have. But, um, which we do a pretty, pretty decent job, um, of it, I think one key in this district that really, you know, it makes, makes sense and makes our internal construction, internal control structure work is, is that we don't, nobody in the business office has authorization to sign any checks. And really doesn't handle that much in the way of cash unless somebody pays us for the, you know, through the pre-K program or the after-school program in cash. That's the only real cash that flows through the business office. Uh, so we're, we have a, you know, a strong treasurer setting, you know, the treasurer's willing to come in every week, sign the checks, review the invoices, and the work that we've done, which is a great, you know, checks and balance right there that, you know, completely separate from the business office. Uh, she was trained well by Tom O'Brien, I don't know if you're familiar with Tom, but Tom used to be the treasurer prior and he, he trained Denise Patch, our treasurer, in regards to, um, the proper way of actually looking at things and questioning stuff you don't, you don't understand. And she does a good job with that. Uh, the other part, the internal control structure is only good if you have good people working in the system. If you don't have good people, the internal control isn't really, you know, you can have the great, greatest written plan ever and it's not gonna work if the people don't follow and do the job. We have a great business office staff that, uh, you know, enforces the rules. We've got, you know, good, you know, principals, their administrative assistants. They do a great job of, of following and asking questions. It really is a team and collaborative effort to be able to run this smoothly.
And we have folks who are willing to speak up if something doesn't look right. And I think, I tell Stan this a lot, you know, keep, keep doing that, because that's important. Because if something doesn't look right, we need to figure it out and we need to solve the problem before it comes to audit time. And there's a really good reason why the audits for years have been very clean. Because we have a staff that stops and says, let's figure this out before we go the wrong direction. That's huge kudos to the way Stan leads that team.
That's all I have, if you have any questions. Oh, the, the audit report, if you, you know, if you're bored at night and you wanna go through 120, 30 pages of riveting reading information, it's on our website.
And is it right, is it right, Stan, that you need to review with the board the, those things we have in place annually? Or is that just best practice? Is it, uh, that financial questionnaire information, is that required or is that just something we do?
It's a requirement in, in statute now, that the board needs to review it.
Every year?
And then, yeah, and the board chair signs off on it stating that, you know, that all, all the members of the board have read.
So, so that's why we share that with you, because it is a requirement in statute.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep.
Um, alright, moving right along, committee reports, personnel.
That would be me. We did meet this evening and we have some contracts for approval. First up, um, I'd like to make a motion to offer a contract as a long-term substitute in middle school English 1.0 FTE for Matthew Merrill.
Does that just mean, oh, sorry, that's not discussion.
I made that motion.
No, I made it.
I'll second it.
There you go.
Sorry.
I missed the first part of it.
Does that long-term substitute means that they're coming in for a position that a teacher is not filling, or does it? I don't understa-
We have a teacher that is out on paternity.
Yeah.
Yes.
Paternity or maternity?
Maternity.
Maternity leave, so.
That's what I assumed it was?
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Yeah.
Good question. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose? Okay, it was unanimous.
Okay.
It was unanimous.
Uh, next is, uh, an employment contract for support staff. Uh, pre-K para educator, 1.0 full-time equivalency for Ella Norton. So I would make a motion that we offer Ella Norton this contract.
I'll second that this time. Oh, so what was this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion. All those in favor? Oppose, abstain, thank you. Next, a support staff contract for para educator 1.0 FTE for Lauren Fallen. That's it. I would make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion? This is a support staff para educator.
Oh.
Lauren Fallen, is that Shrewsbury?
Clarendon.
Clarendon, yeah, that's right, okay. Thank you. Just no discussion? Enough discussion, all those in favor? Oppose, abstain, thank you. Next one. Employment contract for support staff custodian, 1.0 FTE for William Montevan. And I would make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Those abstaining, thank you very much. Just to mention, and we may, we'll probably have more discussion on it when we get to agenda building. But, we hadn't realized previously until we got informed by our expert, Peg TV person, that, um.
William, who is amazing and we're lucky to have William.
Absolutely.
I knew.
Don't be, don't take the shine.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Will.
Yeah, you, you didn't say anything, William did.
I, no, because everybody kept looking at me like I had six heads.
May I continue? Okay, um, so, uh, right now, we're planning on a meeting, a personnel meeting on March 1st next month, at 6:00. But that may, no, 6:30.
Do you wanna do 6:30? Yeah.
Sorry. And that's it, I think. Did I forget anything? Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Patience and understanding, you bet.
Um, okay, so policy, is me. Um, we had a meeting, we have another one next week on the 14th. Um, and I, oh, let me find my notes here. Um, would like to, I always mess this up. Lot happened, but we have one policy, the F-18, which is the 18-year-old students.
Yep.
That, um, we would like to send a vote to rescind this policy as we follow state statute on this anyway. Um, so I make a motion for this policy, um, to be rescinded.
I'll second that.
Do, should we?
Can I have a discussion on it?
There we go.
Should we clarify that it's first reading?
Yes.
So we'll have to get it in the paper and then do second reading, so.
Yep.
May, um, should it be motion to adopt for first reading?
We voted, didn't we vote on this last, when we were in Shrewsbury?
No.
We did?
I think we did agenda building to put it on.
Oh, oh, it was in agenda building.
Because I, I'll almost guarantee, and Pam will tell us if we're, if I'm right or not, we didn't get it in the paper. No.
Because it was just an agenda?
Yeah, so, let's do, adopt for first reading?
Okay, so.
Or approve for first reading tonight?
Yes. Make a motion to approve for first reading of F-18. To rescind this policy.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, any more discussion on it? Alright, all in favor? Okay, so we will get that in the paper for first read. Um, and we didn't have anything else. So, next meeting is next Tuesday on the 14th at 5:30. We're hybrid and in person.
Are we here?
What?
On that.
On the 15th?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess we're traveling.
It's not, it's not hybrid or anything?
We're discussing at agenda building.
Okay, thank you.
The policy meeting will be on the 14th at 5:30 here at Miller, and hybrid. Okay, so on to building and grounds.
Okay, um, most of you know that I'm sort of coming in for another reelection and I do wanna say, the first part, I wanna thank everybody here that signed paperwork. I wanna say, I wanna thank the people in this building to help sign paperwork.
Did you get all your signatures? Did you get all your signatures?
I worked like you wouldn't believe, I went, I bet you I went 75 miles an hour up this road just looking for places, right?
I bet everybody got a clean furnace out of the whole deal.
It was Clarendon, it was a couple other buildings, I wanna thank everybody for doing that. You don't have to vote for me, you just have to be there to, to put it on that, and if they throw me out, they do. Building and grounds, I've been trying on and off to find a spot to, uh, hold a meeting. So I wanna get with you, Brian, sometime this next week or so.
Come in, we'll sit down, we'll find a good time.
We'll talk with Tim, we'll go that way. I'd like to do something before we get to voting if, uh, if we talk to somebody at the, uh, at the polling and such that you may wanna say, listen, we're doing this or we're doing that and then this stuff that works for me, hopefully work with everybody else. I just went through about, uh, four, about four weeks of a little bit of grueling work, um, the jobs that I've been doing and I got a good little burn for the think of that and, and, and stuff. So I came to the point where I just don't wanna give Building and Grounds up any, anything at all. Decided in the last, mm, three hours that I wasn't gonna do it that way. So I'm gonna stick around and if, uh, the committee decides they want somebody else to do that, that'd be fine. I'm not the best when it comes to, to going from talking about things, using my mind and writing stuff down. That little problem I had about five years ago sort of made that being an issue. But, uh, we'll try to work it out, I got, uh, three years left and, uh, if I can hold it out, that'll be great, work it from there.
One thing I'll throw in, because there was a question asked at our last meeting about paving out here and the stormwater, uh, rules and the process there, because Tim was looking into that. We had 18 months to work with the state to get a plan in. So we're actually still under that 18 months, and then once that plan is approved, we have two years to do that. So that's actually a pretty long timeline, so that's still in the works and being looked at, just so folks are aware.
Brian?
Yep.
Over the years, I've seen a few things that, uh, that they make a, a space when they're gonna finally do the, the, the tiring and stuff so that the water that may come in doesn't get to that spool. And if you watch a little bit, you can work it out, there is ways to do it, it was just gotta figure it out.
Yeah, and, and we didn't, we were thinking about paving and we said, let's not pave until we get something approved because then they'll tell us to do it differently, yeah, 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 so.
The base build.
Yeah, good, good point, Dan.
Um, okay, community engagement.
Hey, everyone. So big thanks to Pam and everyone, and Jody, who are the main two folks that work with them. Now we have, these old, they look like name tags, but they don't have your individual name on them. And they just identify that you happen to be the people in the room that are, that is a school board member.
I don't know if William can actually show what those look like, but they look really good, Sam.
Yes, I got to see the proof, so I'm looking forward to getting to see them in person. So it's like, think of like a magnetic name tag that Jeff sent that was around the school board and then people could approach you. I forget the exact phrasing, it's more succinct than I ever supposed to be. I would never fit on a name tag. But basically just one more kind of icebreaker level thing. So when you go to events at the school, you can opt into that and grab that. I'm looking to try and get maybe one or two of them in each of our elementary schools. You know, I just went to a Shrewsbury assembly last week and it was really nice. And I think it would have helped me feel a little less like, I don't recognize that person who's there. As much as I have my little, you know, thing dangling from my belt, it's just a lot more obvious of a way to self-identify yourself to folks that maybe you don't know and help when you're approaching just to say hi to someone. So please grab those in the office whenever you're out of, you remember to do that, I'll do the same. And the other plug that I'd really love to give is to remember that we have that event calendar. You know, A, all of the principals from the schools are emailing every Friday to say what events are going on, both elementary and high school. And so check those out and check out what they've got going on. That's the biggest urge I can give any of you, be it a sports game, be it going to an assembly if they've got room for you and/or, I don't know, here's a good segue, I'm pretty proud of it. I know the singing Valentines are a fundraiser right now that I think is doing that you can order. And they do not have to be delivered just to somebody in one of our schools. You can deliver that to somebody at their workplace in Brooklyn if you so choose. And to celebrate that, I think the only other appropriate thing that anyone else would want to do with their Valentine's Day after they've gone to a committee meeting would be to join us at our committee meeting at 6:30 this Valentine's Day. So, thank you all for all your work and we love community engagement.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. On to finance.
Good evening, everyone. We have the following payroll and pay orders for approval. For payroll dated January 27th, we have regular payroll in the amount of $600,651.19. And for pay orders from our general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $117,428.29. From our after-school program, we have a pay order in the amount of $2,204.61. We have a pay order in the amount of $1,553.11 from our lunch program. And from our general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $26,837.37 for a grand total of $148,023.28. And from our student activities account, and this is what Stan was talking about in his presentation because it's something that we've added in the last few months. From Mill River Student Activity Account, we have a pay order in the amount of $3,112.59. From Clarendon Elementary, zero. From Shrewsbury Mountain.
Yep. From Shrewsbury, it's $274.89.
Is everyone frozen?
Oh, no, okay. From Tinmouth, it's $36. And Wallingford does not have any. For a grand total of $3,423.48.
That's a good pickup.
And I make a motion to, and I don't.
I have a quorum.
Yeah.
I know, I lost everybody.
Leave a quorum, we have six of them.
We have six. All right, so I make a motion to, and I've never done finance. Go ahead, Doug.
Can we just?
Make a motion to approve the numbers set forth to us? For, for, hmm, where are we here? For pay orders.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, we're good. Sorry, Liz.
Andrea, do you want me to note that in the minutes that it was just the six of you?
Yes, please. That we lost.
Due to internet tech.
And I wonder, BJ, there was a problem around 4 o'clock this afternoon that BJ had to connect with VTEL about. So, oh, nope. Oh, we're back.
All right, so Liz, we already finished.
We voted.
We already voted and we already finished, so tell us when your next meeting is.
Okay, great. Well, we don't have a next meeting planned, but we do have our annual meeting on February 23rd. And that is.
At 7:00.
At. You know, I don't have the time.
7:00.
7:00, oh, I do have the time. I beg your pardon. That is at the Mill River Library at 7:00 PM. So that's our next meeting.
All right. Thank you. So that is the end of committees. So the next is transact, other legal business.
Can I throw one thing in? Dane actually emailed me, our student rep, and he said, sorry, my mic wasn't working. So he did have a quick update to share. He's been working with Ms. Thompson as well and trying to figure out, based on some student feedback, it appears that some classrooms did not have clocks. And that was some student feedback that it's a little frustrating sometimes to not know what time it is in your classroom. So he's been working with Ms. Thompson to figure out where those rooms are and how to make that happen. So trying to serve the student body. Yep, 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 absolutely. So I think, good, good to hear that he's getting feedback from students and trying to represent his student body well.
Okay, any other? We're on to transact, other legal business. Do we have any? Okay, let's go to agenda building.
So historically, historically, we have not held a second February meeting because there's the annual meeting. But I think what we've also done in the past too is we've held a 30-minute business meeting prior to the annual meeting. So we would have a 6:30 business meeting in the library in person. If we have to do pay orders, things like that, just kind of bare bones agenda, then we have our annual meeting. But it's the board's meeting, so I'll let you decide how you want to do that.
I don't see any reason why we can't continue with that, but I know.
Again, having, knowing now that there's, we can have a meeting the 1st of March is, for, from my perspective, it's fine.
Then that's fine, yeah.
Is, I see Stan on there. I wonder if Stan will chime in. Is there any issue with if we wait till March 1st? Are there any, any problems with pay orders or anything like that? Because otherwise, I don't see an issue with that.
If they have them, too, Karen will just let me know when I'll come in.
Yeah, there may be some credit card bills that need to be paid. And we have a water loan that needs to be paid by the 1st of March.
Yeah, and I can, just let me know when I'll come in.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, if that works.
So, okay, we won't. How does everybody feel about?
What I'm hearing from Lynn is, don't worry about a 30-minute meeting because the next week you're going to have a full meeting on the 1st.
Do.
Do you want to do that?
It's mainly for signing things that we normally have to do and can't wait until the start of the next month.
Yeah, and I'll take care of all that.
Should we, do we have to make a motion to authorize Andrea to do that?
I've done it before.
I know, I'm just asking.
I think that couldn't hurt to sign on behalf of the board. Sure.
I'll make that motion.
Once I brought it up, I guess I'll second it.
Well, I was going to second it, but you know.
Be quiet next time.
Yeah, I know.
All in favor? All right, I'll come sign everything in the midst of everything else.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Doesn't, doesn't it hurt to make sure?
Do we have to do agenda building for that, the meeting?
The 1st.
Because we won't do it.
We should do agenda building for the 1st. So that would be, if we look at our schedule, we would have Tinmouth coming up on March 1st. So we would get an update from them. Kind of crazy to think that we heard from Tinmouth way at the beginning of the year and we're starting to get through the second half of the year, so we're back to Tinmouth again.
Are we holding it here? Is that a travel?
Yeah, we'd be at Tinmouth.
Yeah, it would be at Tinmouth, okay.
If we want to keep doing what we've been doing, then yes. The other thing that I would throw on there, which is board policy, would be risk management report. So that's a policy that I think is worth doing some discussion on because it's come up in the past from the public. So we can prepare a report for you to explain what we have in place for risk management and how that works. Those would be, then we've got second reading of F-18. Those are the only things I've got. So Tinmouth, risk management, and second reading of F-18. What am I missing?
We need an executive session that night.
Yes, thank you.
We will have that.
But our soon-to-be-here board member, is there anything that we need to do during that time?
Soon-to-be what?
Board member.
Oh, yeah, she's going to get sworn in, so she'll be present.
We got to put her to work.
Yes. That meeting, anyway. She'll be at town meeting, too. It can be a quick, short, short meeting.
It's a long time from now, so.
It is, so a lot can come up.
And I do want to say something. I think we've been doing a really good job of, we meet from 7:00 to 9:00 and we have a lot to do. And we have not had meetings where we've gone too far over 9:00 and we have not had meetings where we go too far under. So I, you know, we can reflect at the end of the year. But I think, I like that we've had a schedule and we've known what's coming and we're not missing things and we're doing some things that are in policy that we actually haven't done in a while. So we can definitely think, you know, when we get to the end of the year, if this schedule has worked well. But I think we've been hitting our time and doing good work from my perspective. So I think, I don't think that'll be a short meeting, but it might be a, you know, 8:30 meeting.
Well, that's fine. And we have time, so I would suggest not sending the agenda till almost.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll get that same.
So that way we have time to come and give you ideas if we come up with ideas and stuff like that.
That's all I got.
All right, do we have executive session tonight? No. Nope. So I make a motion to adjourn at 8:24 PM. No. All right, see y'all. Good night.